...to order, disclaimer, I want us to make sure we're running things decent and in order. My counterparts have probably heard this about 10 times now, and I want to keep reiterating it, decent and in order when we're in the meetings, okay? We respect everybody, we want everybody to express themselves, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're all being adults and doing things properly. So once again, thank y'all for coming out. First, we will have an invocation by Pastor James Woods.
Let us pray. Gracious God, our Father, we come once again with thanksgiving in our heart. Lord, we come saying thank you for your love, your kindness, your goodness, and your mercy. Now, Lord, as we begin to go into the session, Lord, we ask you, Father God, to allow your Holy Spirit to be with you, Lord. We ask you, Father God, to be with the council, Father God. Lord, we ask you right now, Lord, to look upon the LaGrange community, Father God, continue to unify and strengthen the community, Father God. We thank you, Lord, what you have done already within the community, Father God. And, Lord, we ask you to continue to be with all our youth, Father God, as well as our adults, Father God, realizing that, Lord, the need is many, is great, Father, and we know, Father God, that you're able to do all things through Jesus. Lord, we ask you right now to just be with this LaGrange community, Father. And, Lord, we ask you right now to look upon the ones that just don't feel like being here, Father God, and the ones that are sick, Father God. We ask you to protect us, Father, because we need you right now, Father God. In days and time like this, we need you. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please, daughters, for the pleasure of believing.
.......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I brought this picture to make sure that for those that haven't seen this parcel in person, that this parcel that they're requesting to rezone is inside of Bryant Lake Community. It is not a through street. You turn into Bryant Lake, there is a huge monument here at the front of the community, and you turn into Bryant Lake Boulevard to Bryant Lake Community, and this is no through street. This is not Hamilton Road, this is not Lafayette Parkway. This is a planned community that has a master development agreement from November 26 of And the master development agreement was between two developers and the city of LaGrange. That zoning was changed already that allows this parcel to build 250 apartment units. The conditions for rezoning is whether their proposed zoning will adversely affect existing use or usability of the adjacent nearby property, or has it a reasonable economic use as it's currently zoned. It's currently zoned as apartments. It was zoned as commercial, so this is a master development plan, and there was a DRI that was performed on this parcel, and it was approved with, is it seven counties that does the DRI, or is it nine counties? I don't remember. It's at least seven counties that are involved when they are doing this study, and it's to make sure that there's not going to be any fire safety, traffic safety, and it looks at schools as well. And at this time, this DRI was done in 2006, and it was in this master development plan, it said all zoned properties that were residential. So there were multiple, there were two developers in here and the city of LaGrange that agreed to this originally, that all conditions in the master development would apply to R1, R2, R3, and R5 parcels. So that was all the residential, and there were two developers that were included in this specific section, and it said the maximum number of residential units for all parcels would not exceed 974 parcels, 974 units, for all the residential parcels. And then in 2019, in February of 2019, all of this land that is now asking for an additional zoning change, all of it was put up for requesting a zoning change in 2019, which the city council approved. And at that time, it was commercial. So the DRI, the study for safety, for fire, for schools, for everything else, was all on all of this land for the master development plan for Bryant Lake Community that included commercial, multifamily, and single family. The study was done with the front land all being commercial. So it's already gone against the DRI and changed to additional commercial. There was 974 units originally approved in the DRI for residential in this area. Again, this is a, this is a small area. This is a total of about 600 acres total for all residential to be, 974 units within that 600 acres. So now, within that 600 acres, because of the zoning change in February, it has been increased to 1,372. So you're already at 1,372 units, the way it's zoned right now, which is already too many. And there are 13,471 housing units in the city of LaGrange. You've got 10% housing units in Bryant Lake for the whole city of LaGrange already because the zoning change that was already done. And now they're asking to change it again, to change it to the current UDO. And where they're requesting that you're changing it from medium density residential to corridor medium density residential, to corridor medium density residential, you know, looking at that, that sounds like, oh, that's a, why not? They're asking for it to be the same thing. Our zoning changes have changed drastically. So now, there's still, there's still similar zoning in place for residential, but multifamily, there is no density limit. So right now, y'all had, the city council had previously approved it, where they made it 250 apartment units that could be built on this parcel, this specific parcel. Now they're asking for it to fall under the new UDO, which has no density limit, which means they could build any number of apartment units there as long as it meets all the other criteria, which is 60% of land coverage, three-story units, and some other stuff. So they can put, pack as many apartment units on that land with 60% land coverage. And so what they're asking for is to only abide by the city standards and not this master development plan that's already in place. So I ask that you please respectfully of the residents that are already in Bryant Lake, but the future residents, there's 288 townhomes that are going vertical right now. There's already 40 something townhomes that are built in Bryant Lake Community, and there's 288 under construction right now. There's already 1,700 apartment units in the city of LaGrange that are vertical, that are being added to our community as it is. We do not need more apartments, definitely not in Bryant Lake Community, where we already have the potential to have 10% of the housing units in the city of LaGrange inside of Bryant Lake. So I appreciate your consideration.
Kendall, do you know what the maximum number of apartments would be that they could put if this, if it is rezoned, you have under those rules?
Well, there's not, there's not a density limit, it would be 60% coverage, and so I'm not sure what their study has shown.
Kendall, where does the master development plan come from?
The master development plan was presented to the city of LaGrange in 2006, when all of the, this land used to be in Troup County, and it was annexed into the city of LaGrange. And it was, this is the highest density subdivision in Troup County, and it's the only one that has been fully built out because we've been investing in the community for the last 15 years. And the other developments that, there was one other that's this high density, and that's River Mill, that has changed names now, and that one has started back up. So we have been investing in this community, you know, proving the area for the last 15 years, and in 2019, when they changed the land from commercial to residential, it was really pretty short sighted, because now there's, there is 500 housing units already in LaGrange. When they finish these, these townhomes, there's going to be actually almost 600 housing units that are already in Bryant Lake right now, and there's already about 1,200 housing units and townhomes that are being built within a one-mile radius. So you're going to have, you're going to have grocery stores and commercial that is going to be looking in this area, and it probably was financially feasible to have, economically feasible to have kept it as commercial, you know, and so now, since 2019, it was changed to residential. And now we are overbuilt with multifamily already in LaGrange right now. We are going to be at a capacity with it, and affecting rental rates, which, you know, could be a good thing, but there's 1,700 apartment units that are already vertical right this minute in LaGrange.
One more question, I'm done. What's the consensus among the Bryant Lake community? Are they for this or against this?
Well, definitely against it. We already, they were against originally when it was changed from 974 units to 372 units. So right now, we're experiencing, when people are coming and going from the community, there's only, there's a little over 200 homes in Bryant Lake right now. We're adding two, and we just added 50 lots, we have a new builder that's coming in and getting ready to start on those 50 lots, so we're going to have 250 homes on the residential section. We do have two more phases in the residential section to add more. There's 288 townhomes that are being built right now. So we're going to have near 600 families, which could be two cars, we could have 1,200 cars coming and going from the community right now, you know, about within the next couple of months. We could have 1,200 cars coming and going, there's not even a red light at the end of Bryant Lake. So before anything's done, at least another study needs to be put in place to study what this is going to do to the school system, as well as the traffic at the end of Bryant Lake. All of the housing units that are coming along Hamilton Road, there needs to be a study on traffic now.
Thanks, Kendall.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. I think she may be the only one that is against, so can we have somebody that may be for?
Well, can I?
Oh, yeah, he can, he can, yeah. I'm speaking prematurely, I'm sorry. I apologize, I assumed. I thought she was the spokesperson.
Renee and I are from California. We purchased in LaGrange and in the Bryant Lake community because it is what it is. It's a beautifully laid-out master plan community. Coming from Sacramento where we live, I can tell you what high density looks like, I can tell you what it feels like, and it doesn't feel like home. It feels like you're living in a maze when you have that many people clammed into one spot. Right now, there isn't school capacity for the kids that will be at it with that many units, and when they say open building with no capacity, that's exactly what they mean. We have a lot of builders in California that, because of the homeless situation in California, where we're building these types of mass, heavy, heavy density populations, and it's really a good thing in one respect, but for people that are trying to retire and have a decent quality of life, it can really be detrimental to that kind of thing, so please consider that, thank you.
Just to be clear?
Yes, sir.
You're against?
Oh, definitely against.
Yes, sir. What's your name, sir?
I'm Joe Levy.
Joe, okay. Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon, my name is Tom Conway, I also live in Bryant Lake neighborhood. I've got two main concerns. I'm a retired educator. One of my main concerns is the increase in traffic. Traffic in this city, as you well are aware, in certain places is already pretty bad, especially at certain times of day. Everywhere I go, it seems they're building new apartments or townhomes. It's my understanding there's something in excess of 3,000 either already started or planned and approved. Now, we're trying to go beyond that, so I'm concerned about traffic, but even more so, I'm concerned about the schools. Our question is, is this developer, Keystone Custom Homes, I believe is their name, are they going to contribute to building more schools? I think the elementary school that serves our area is already overcrowded. I'm not sure about Troup High School, but with this influx of new people, especially when you consider the other apartments that are under construction now on Hamilton Road, just down the road, those schools are going to be packed. I've taught in packed schools. It does make a difference. Too many kids causes problems, and that's, that's something that needs to be addressed because it doesn't, you can't build a new school in six months. It takes quite some time because of all the red tape and so forth and so on. So I am definitely against this change. I'm all for development, I'm all for the city growing. LaGrange is a wonderful city. My wife and I moved here two years ago because it's a great city, and I'm just concerned that the schools are going to be so crowded that it's going to be a major problem. So thank you, and I hope you'll consider that.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Two more.
My name is Joe Kirkland, I live in Bryant Lake. I've been in Bryant Lake since 2024, about four years, and my concern is just echoing my neighbors is the traffic and the school system. I just looked it up on my phone right now, Troup County, teacher to student ratio is 15 to one, so that affects my son, and you know, if he's in a classroom, it's overcrowded, will he get the attention he needs? Also, you know, my wife and I, we walk in afternoons. If you ride through there, you'll see people walking, and with the hot traffic, you know, that's a safety concern for our community. So I just want you guys to consider, my vote is a no, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Kirkland.
Chuck Raffino, I work out of Delta, as you can see. I used to live in Henry County, and I moved away from there because it was a little bit more than I was hoping for. Traffic wise was a big issue, and nobody stopped the traffic, nobody stopped the building, and you know, there's, they didn't spread out, and they didn't plan ahead. I just want to make sure that, since we had a master plan, when I bought in a couple years ago, I thought, well, at least these people know what they're doing, and I just want to make sure that they continue to do the same thing, so definitely against it.
Thank you, Mr. Raffino.
Hello, my name is Renee Johnson, I'm from California. I didn't know anything about Georgia, nor did I know anything about LaGrange. My realtor actually found me a house in LaGrange, and when I came out to visit in the subdivision that I'm in right now, I thought, wow, this is really nice. It was spacious enough for large families to really enjoy living there. My question is, right now, is, I don't understand why this developer wants to clutter where I reside. I don't understand that, because right now, everybody's spread out, all the families walk around the neighborhood, they wave, they speak, even walking through Bryant Lake, it's a nice walk from my house to Hamilton. It's a nice peaceful walk, sometime you see the deers go by. The scenery is beautiful, and I just think that putting apartments, more homes is going to clutter, and that's not the idea that I had when I moved here. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. I think we've heard a lot of against, is anybody that is for?
Mayor Pro Tem and Council, I'm Keith Newberry with Keystone Custom Homes. It's good to be back before you. Ms. Butler spoke to a development agreement from November of 2007. What she felt to mention is an article number seven, it states, "Developer agrees that the requirements and conditions set forth herein shall remain in effect unless specifically amended or revoked by subsequent action of the mayor, council of the city of LaGrange in accordance with the established procedures of zoning amendments." A subsequent action was taken on February 26, 2019. Former landowner Greg Rogers brought the parcels before this council, and this council chose to rezon the property out of the Bryant Lake Community Master Plan. Our parcels are no longer a part of the Bryant Lake Community Master Plan. We are not a part of the development agreement, we're not a part of it at all. This was determined further in a court action brought by Larry Silver, who sold LGI Silverton Homes their property. Mr. Silver brought a case against this body and the mayor of LaGrange, stating that you illegally rezoned the property out of the master development agreement. The judge summarily dismissed all but one of his complaints. The one complaint that was not dismissed was a procedural complaint that arrived from a testimony during one of the interviews with the councilman on when that councilman had read the UDO. Had they read it before the vote or something, and so that question couldn't be clarified in the court that day, so the judge did not rule against that. Subsequently, Mr. Silver sold his property on October the 26th of 2019, and he dismissed his lawsuit on October 31st of the same year, five days later. So he knew he had no legal standing, but he created the idea that you had done something wrong in order to buy him time to find a buyer for his property. Well, we've continued to see misgivings with the Bryant Lake community. The fact is, the Bryant Lake Master Plan Community died years ago, and the rezoning that you all did in 2019 allowed for new growth, regrowth. Now, I don't have to tell you what type of development's going on in your city, you know it, you see it. I think they said there's 1,700 apartment units that are currently under construction. Some of you who've been on the council for several years recall that the city employed the Bleakley Group to run a demographics and a housing survey and study for the city. It determined that the city of LaGrange has almost 20,000 people a day that drive into the county to work because there's no housing here. 20,000 a day. We can't build enough apartments, our townhomes, our homes in the Bryant Lake Community to meet the requirements of housing that this city currently needs. The first complaint about this rezon was, oh, it's going to be cheap, shoddy, government style housing. Well, that's not true, because that's not a marketable product. So then the argument changed to, oh, well, we have this master plan community, and we have this development agreement. Well, it's already been proven in the court that that ended. It's no longer, we are no longer a part of the Bryant Lake Community. As a matter of fact, those signs are on our property, and we can change them if we chose to, to not read Bryant Lake. I'm not saying that we're planning to do that, but I'm just saying Bryant Lake, as it is presented here, is no longer a thing. It's been continued to be represented as such, and I'm disappointed in that, but it's, it's not my story. I think if you recall, when we brought this before rezoning a year ago, there were a number of residents here in protest, and I think you might recall a few of their testimonies said that they weren't really sure why they were here anymore, because they had been sold that when they bought their home, all this property in the front was going to remain a wooded hamlet, there was not going to be any development there, and so these people bought into the idea that they were going to drive a full half mile off of Hamilton Road into the neighborhood, and there would just be pine trees lining a four-lane road with a divided center median. That wasn't true. We even heard a resident stand here before you and tell you that they had been sold that bill of goods, and they had learned that night when they saw the plaque that we could build 148 houses, and that we could build 225 apartments and 120 villas, but they had been told that that land was going to remain undeveloped. And I think we're hearing similar echoes tonight of, it's such a nice drive from Hamilton Road to the neighborhood, it was never going to be that, it's not going to be that. That died in 2019. So I think it's disingenuous to continue to come before the council to present that this neighborhood and this development agreement is still in standing, because it's not. It's disingenuous to sell neighbors with the idea that this is a master plan community. The Silverton property might still be a part of the development agreement. Ours was rezoned out of it, period. We talked about the DRI. Well, there was a DRI that was conducted on our project before Greg Rogers rezoned it. We've spoken with your utility company. There is more than enough capacity to build to the UDO in every classification of this development, per your own utility companies. We've done studies on the traffic. We are talking four lanes throughout the entirety of our development. When you get beyond our development to the Silverton Homes and to the Bryant Lake neighborhood, it does go to two lanes, but there is no way that building to the UDO on a four lane is going to overwhelm the traffic. It's just not going to happen. As a matter of fact, when it was zoned commercial, there was expectations that you would have many thousands of more people coming and going than we can build for in the current UDO or the current zone status. So I'm hopeful the council will look to the future needs, because I don't believe that there was a short sighted vote on the rezon for this property in 2019. You have a shortfall of housing by tens of thousands of units, and we look at what that means to this town overall, and it's, it's a stifling, it would be a stifling to stop the growth and the development path that is moving out to the southeast side of the county. There was a comment made earlier about education. Last year, Mr. Costle said that the Board of Education is very well aware of the units that are being added to LaGrange and Troup County. that are being added to LaGrange and Troup County, and they are already making plans to accommodate new rooftops, new children, new students. So no one in this county and city government is being caught blindsided by any of this growth. You are all doing a great job, and those guys are doing a great job in forecasting and foreseeing the future of your city. Because this city is moving to become probably one of the very best examples of modern manufacturing in the United States. And it's this antiquated thinking and protectionism that we're seeing and disingenuous presentations that's going to stifle that. You're signing deals left and right. You're bringing Remington. It's already underway. CSX and the Intermodal, most Intermodal inland ports unload 50,000 containers a year. Yours is projected to unload between 120 and 150,000 a year. Where are they going to live? Going to send them down to Okalika? The talk of being in the neighborhood and making the nice long walk, well, right now, these neighbors coming out of the Bryant Lake neighborhood onto the four-lane, having to walk on the road. Your planning commission made the recommendation, as a condition of our rezon, that we add an eight-foot wide sidewalk down the entirety of our development. That's a great idea, and we welcome that. We think that's a good idea. We believe that having pedestrian-friendly pathways that lead from the top end of our community down to Hamilton Road is value-add for the residents of Silverton Homes, Bryant Lake Neighborhood, and our community. More importantly, in order to, and we touched on this some last year, in order to get the retail restaurants, stores, service that we need to make LaGrange a two-exit city instead of the single Lafayette Parkway, you're going to need density. Now, we do have help coming from Vista at Creekview and at Rockland Homes, who are building the townhomes just across 85, but you're going to need more. You're not going to get sit-down restaurants. You're not going to get the quality of retail that this city would probably like to have and needs unless we build to the UDO and unless we bring the rooftops necessary to bring in good tenants. And as you know, our property has 20 acres that borders Hamilton Road and 85. I don't know that there is another piece on the Hamilton Road corridor adjacent to 85 that offers the upside to this city that our properties do. And we want to make sure, and we want to be rezoned to the UDO so that we have an opportunity to bring the housing stock needed in the form needed. We may determine when it's time to develop, but you don't need any more apartments, you need some townhomes. Or that you don't need any more townhomes, you need apartments, because that's what this community can afford. And we want to not hinder some of the best real estate in your city with some antiquated ideas and some ideas that we've sold our entire neighborhood, a bill of goods that we knew wouldn't stand up, and we knew when we sold it to them that it wasn't the truth. We had neighbors last year tell you that. They had been misled and told that, oh, nothing's going to be here. That was never the truth. But it sure sold a lot of homes. Sure sold a lot of homes. So I ask that you carefully consider our rezon request to the UDO and know that we are looking to be good partners and good stewards of the land here in LaGrange. And it's our hope that we will be able to progress along with you and to allow for the growth corridor down Hamilton Road at 85 to be a very successful growth of the city in the next five to 10 years. Thank you.
Got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
The question that I asked Mr. Butler just a minute ago, currently, I think we've been told that you can currently put 250 apartments on this piece of property. Under this changing in the zoning, what's the maximum number of apartments that you'd be able to put on the property with all the regulations from the UDO?
I don't know, Mr. Mitchell, because we haven't actually run a calculation to see how many we can, because our interest today is not to figure out how to maximize, because we don't know what kind of housing units we want to put there. We don't know what can be absorbed. We just want to have a zoning that allows us to build to the UDO so that as this other housing stock is absorbed, because right now, very little's coming out of the ground. Capital markets have precluded that. We've had more apartments multifamily delivered in the United States in the last 18 months than in the previous 40 years. So there is a lot of apartments that have come on, online here and elsewhere. I don't want to be bound to building any apartments over there, because we may determine that building apartments isn't good for LaGrange in that quarter. It needs to be townhomes, because that's what the city can afford, and that provides the best living experience. So we're not asking for any variances. We're saying we'll build to the UDO, and we don't have a plan on what that will be, what the unit types will be. We just want equal opportunity to build to the UDO like other developers who have multifamily parcels in the city are being allowed to build to. So we're not asking for any favors. We're just saying, this is not true any longer, and we do agree to put the eight-foot sidewalk along our development to incorporate all of the parts of Bryant Lake community and our Long Cane Creek community, to give them pedestrians' walkway and to have the flexibility to work within your regulations.
So is that what you're going to call it, Long Cane Creek Community?
Yes, sir. That's what it was rezoned, is Long Cane Creek.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
So just by listening to the residences of the Bryant Lake community, I'm sure that you understand that this is something that they really don't want or are fond of. Do you share any of those concerns on traffic, the schools, or density? You have any concerns about that?
Yes, sir. I think we've talked about it, that like, there's a misconception that the schools aren't going to be able to handle that. Well, Mr. Cossel-
You're saying they will?
I'm saying they're already planning for it. They've been planning for it for years now. Like, I've had people within your city government tell me, oh, no one is caught off guard by the growth. BOE is already looking to build new schools, because we know we've got an influx of people coming here. So it's, traffic, the traffic study was done. No matter what we build there, we can't generate more traffic on our stretch of property and the four-lane streets that our stretch of property will be within. Like, from traffic counts, it's just not real. Like, it's just not going to happen. The old zoning of commercial allowed for a lot more traffic than what we can generate just by building houses, apartments, and/or the townhomes. That's why they've made them put four lanes in with a divided median to be able to sustain the traffic. But without that huge commercial piece any longer, what you build residentially, we could have done that with a two-lane and divide, but four lanes will handle anything that your UDO would allow for us to build.
One more question. I'm done. You mentioned affordability. What's going to be the price range for your townhomes and apartments?
We have no idea. Again, we haven't even created a development plan for that.
Nobody knows their price for it anymore. Nobody. That's from this point until nobody can tell me what are going to be the price for these apartments. Thank you.
Yes, I mean, Mr. Childs, you must understand that when people are coming before you to look for rezoning, the capital markets may change significantly. In many cases, you may not even have a pro forma on the longevity or the density of the project, or what you can build, or how many apartment units you are going to put on, or the size of those units. I mean, I can tell you this, will have to be market rate or better, or we're not going to be able to sell anything. We're not going to be able to rent to anyone.
I would think that if you're going to invest, just for example now, I'm no rocket scientist, but you've got an idea of how much money you're going to invest in this project, and you know what kind of profit margin you want to hold. So by your profit margin, you should know some kind of estimate of how much you're going to charge for an apartment or a townhome or a townhouse, whatever you want to name. You should have some type of estimate.
Assuming that you know how many linear feet of street you're going to have, and how many linear feet of sewer you're going to have, and how many lights you're going to need to put up, and how many units you can actually build, right now, we don't know any of that. We haven't even decided if we would build apartments, or if we would build townhomes, or if we would build a mixture of both.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Thank you.
We don't even want to move the conceptual phase until we know that we have equal playing and zoning. Otherwise, we're just making up stuff to tell you something so you might want to hear it. That's not our purpose here.
Fair enough. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Since everybody's asking questions-
Please do.
-I'd ask a question. So you have built in this community before?
No, sir. Have not.
What other communities have you built in? Just curious.
I've built in Athens and Clark County. My partners, who have a larger company, have built with their company all over America.
Okay. Have you ever been approached by anybody with affordable housing or any of that federally-funded apartment-style living and asked you to set aside a portion of your building for subsidized housing? In other words-
I have not personally.
Okay. Have you ever been approached?
I have not been approached.
Okay.
But I've typically built residential homes, semi-custom style homes. So this is a different type of development and would be under a different type of company. It would be more of a production style of building. And since we haven't, within this company, done that type of building, and since my partners and their company have been student housing specialist, the largest developer in the country, I do know they've had some of that in some of their projects. And I know they've accommodated that in some of their projects in different municipalities, like, if I'm not mistaken, in Washington State, maybe California, up in the Northeast.
Okay. Fantastic. And I thank you for your honesty and your being candid about how you're approaching this, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No, sir. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments. I think we've heard everybody.
Since he raised me, I would like to be able to speak to what he says by my name.
I understand that. I understand that. But we've taken all the comments. We've had fours and againsts. So I had to ask you to have a seat.
Thank you.
Mr. Cossel, can Mr. Cossel come up?
Mr. Cossel? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Hey, Mr. Cossel. Just for my knowledge, do you have any idea how much different, how many more homes can be built on that property by changing the UDO?
Excellent question, Councilman Mitchell. I can tell you this, it's zoned currently corridor median density residential, as we all know. As Ms. Butler alluded to, the total lot coverage cannot exceed 60%. So doing some very rudimentary math and not factoring in sidewalks, parking lots, pads for the apartments or townhomes themselves, the maximum that they would appear to be able to build is between 400 and 450, using the 60% lot coverage number that was mentioned.
It's almost double.
Not quite, but yes, sir.
From what they're under now. Almost.
And once again, one of the things that was mentioned, Councilman Mitchell, is that the Unified Development Ordinance, as adopted by the Council of the City of LaGrange in June of 2021, has no density limits for multifamily. That's completely incorrect. We have increased the allowable density for both townhome development projects and for multifamily development projects in the interest of creating, or I'm sorry, bringing online more building types within our community. Quite frankly, we've had rather lengthy discussions about affordability. And across the country, we've been underbuilding as a nation for at least the past 40 years. Within the city of LaGrange, quite frankly, we've been underbuilding since at least 2007, 2008, whenever the market crashed. The only way that we can get these rental or purchase prices to decrease is to increase the amount of products that are made available. It's simple supply and demand, is what it is.
You're saying that we build a million apartments, it's going to bring down the price on rentals and leases?
Well, I didn't reference a million. And I heard a number mentioned that we've got roughly 20,000 commuters that travel into LaGrange every day for their place of employment. I'm not advocating that we capture all 20,000. But what I am saying is that if we were to capture a portion of those, whatever the percentage is, we've got to have a place for them to live. Now, whether it's built out as a cottage-style home, a cottage court-style development, a townhome, a traditional single-family home, or a multifamily apartment complex, the more supply you have, there should be a corresponding reduction in the cost per unit, whether it be your mortgage or whether it be your rental rate.
Of those 20,000, how many do you suggest we capture?
I don't have an opinion. Once again, I'm paid staff. I don't make recommendations, and I don't have a vote. I leave that to you gentlemen.
You have an opinion about, you say that the more we build-
Yes, sir.
-it will go down, so that's what opinions you're correct.
That's what all the contemporary literature shows.
You know, we're spending a lot of time on this. I understand what you're saying as it references free market. In other words, a free market, the more you build, the cheaper the product is going to be, because you're putting more on the market. I don't think that's an opinion that is a, that is a, as a quantifiable fact in America that exists, and we have free market. So, you know, for my fellow councilmen to ask you that question, I think is, I think is short-sighted on his part for not understanding what free market is. Furthermore, I have to ask you this question, since we're always coming back to this affordable housing thing. Have you been approached by anyone that deals with Section 8 public housing, or anybody looking for a partnership with any of these developers to make a, a more affordable community in the city?
Councilman Gaskin, thank you for asking that question. Currently, we've got roughly 2,000 multifamily units that are entitled, approximately 900 townhome units that are entitled, and approximately 600 single-family homes that are entitled. I have not been approached by any of the developers who've indicated that they've been contacted by anybody as it relates to Section 8 or other subsidized housing.
Do these people that do this subsidized housing, do they have your phone number? Do they know who you are? Are you not in your office?
Yes, sir.
Is your email on?
Yes, sir.
So you are available to help and assist in this matter?
Yes, sir.
Okay? Because I'm just going to be honest with the public and everybody. I'm getting kind of tired of this whole subsidized and affordable housing thing coming up, and I don't have my people that are supposed to be in these positions doing what it is they need to do. They need to know this man. They need to call him. They need to be sitting next to him. They need to be over his shoulder. If he's sick, they need to tell me before he does. This is what I need in this community. I need people of excellence. I need people that are going to do their job. Now, Mark, I commend you for doing your job. I commend you for that, and I commend my fellow council members for doing their job. And we're going to continue to pursue excellence and a free market. Thank you.
So just so you know-
Yes, sir.
-no disrespect to you. It was just those questions I asked you, that's just for clarification. So no disrespect to you, sir. Thank you.
If I can, I'd like to address two other topics that were mentioned by some concerned citizens of the Bryant Lake community. Take me less than a minute. Since December 2021, either myself personally, or myself in concert with our assistant city manager, have been either meeting monthly, or at least communicating via email monthly with members of the Troup County School System, alerting them to the fact of what type of growth and development we're experiencing and will continue to experience within the city of LaGrange. They've done their extrapolations, they've done modelings, and they're prepared to meet those demands going forward. Additionally, there was a comment made as it relates to the impact that it will have on this community if these parcels are built out. I'll just remind the council that Bryant Lake Boulevard is intentionally named a boulevard. That's why it's four lanes. Presently, it does dead-end into the Bryant Lake community. However, there is another subdivision that will likely be brought online sometime in the near future, at least within the next 12 to 24 months, between Bryant Lake and Lexington Park. When that occurs, there's going to be required to be connectivity between Hamilton Road and Upper Big Springs Road. So not only do you have access via Hamilton Road, but then another access will be created via Upper Big Springs. So that should help alleviate some of the potential traffic concerns.
Was that in your last report that you sent out?
No, sir, because that's speculative at this point. There's development taking place- There's development taking place, a phased development, within the Bryant Lake community itself. There's a community referred to commonly as Steeplechase.
Right.
We don't have any plans for that at that point, or at this point, even though we've had some very high-level discussions about it. That Steeplechase subdivision will actually provide connectivity between Bryant Lake and Lexington Park, by default, Upper Big Springs Road.
So you see this building in this particular community gaining steam?
From what I've been told, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. One other thing that I know, we catch a lot of heat from on Facebook, is that we're not planning with the roads with all these apartments being built. Can you briefly touch on how it works with DOT, and that like, the bypass is a state route road, and how DOT does not build out roads until they see the need, and that we are limited in that, how we address them, and how we convince them to move forward with the project?
Councilman Mitchell, it'd be my pleasure to answer that question. As you know, we've got utility infrastructure that will satisfy the commercial, residential, and industrial developments that we are expecting within the City of La Grange. If we have an infrastructure problem, it's associated with traffic volume within the city itself. Now, more specifically, that traffic volume where it creates problems is along our major thoroughfares and corridors. Those major thoroughfares and corridors, whether it be Hamilton Road, Whitesville Road, Lafayette Parkway, Vernon Road, Hogansville Road, or New Franklin Road, are all state routes. But to our credit, things are looking very bright in the future for the City of La Grange on the transportation front. The city has been working with the other two municipalities, as well as Troup County, while engaging a consultant in order to work on a comprehensive traffic plan with the Georgia Department of Transportation. Additionally, we're all familiar with the Hamilton Road widening project. Arguably, it took us 30 years to get here.
Praise God.
But we're already there. As you see, the right-of-way acquisition has occurred, and that project is under construction. We've also got the pending North La Grange Loop Bypass, or you can call it a loop or a bypass, that will provide connectivity via four lanes, two northbound and two southbound, from New Franklin Road to Lafayette Parkway. Thirdly, we've got the potential widening of Vernon Road between La Grange Academy and either Forest Avenue or Panther Way, however you want, we'd like me to refer to it. So, we're taking every opportunity to engage the Department of Transportation while working with our other municipal partners and county partners. But to your point, Councilman Mitchell, worth the mercy of DOT while attempting to address those issues. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell said a while ago that, he asked you, what's the number that they can build in Bryant Lake? He said 400 to 450, which is just about double what he said. So, I heard you address education and traffic. How do you feel about the density that some of the residents feel, and the concerns they have in Bryant Lake about that?
I don't, I don't have an opinion, per se. What I will, what I will offer for clarity is this. The number that I alluded to, between 400 and 450, was not within Bryant Lake. It was within the 39 acres being proposed to be rezoned for Keystone Custom Homes.
Okay.
And that would be provided that it was all built out as multifamily. That number gets reduced dramatically if you factor in multifamily in conjunction with townhomes. So it all depends on what the final plan submitted is.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your comments, all the fours and againsts. No delegations tonight. We have petition, petitions, excuse me, and communications notice of claim for damages filed on behalf of Kena Ferguson and Joyce Ferguson.
Yes, Mayor, the secret city claimed the right to sue our minor defendant that served back in December on Bull Street. Staff recommend that council deny the claim and allow it to be processed through our insurance.
Make a motion. We deny the claim. Send our insurance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's approved. All right. City managers, report.
Yes, sir. Got four items to look with the rule of group. First one is the financials, which have been provided to you. Revenues for the year-to-date, from February, are running about 1% ahead of expenses, so it's like 2.1 million dollars to the good. If you look at the working capital change, though, for the year, which also includes the items that are due to the city to be paid as receivable, plus the items that the city owes to people through payables, then that 2.1 million goes away, because we do owe back, as we talked about last year. We're reducing our electric and our gas rates to pay back some of the fuel over collection. So, all in all, we're running about even for the year, for the fiscal year. So that's good news. All in all, in the bank, our working capital is running at about 68 million dollars. So, you know, city's healthy, and the year's going fine. Second item is the payment of bills over $5,000, and that's there for your review. If you have any questions, certainly feel free to reach out to me. I'll be happy to answer those as needed. The third item is a proposed four-way stop on Garfield Street. We discussed that in the work session today. There are already a couple of four-way stops on Jefferson. We ran this by our traffic engineer, barge engineering, and they thought that this would be an acceptable solution to help the citizens that live in that area that were concerned about the growth and additional traffic. We were approached by a citizen that was interested in a four-way stop at that location. And plus, with the additional pedestrian traffic associated with the development over there, we thought this would be a good idea. So, if you're so inclined, we would entertain a motion to add a four-way stop at Garfield and Jefferson Streets.
Motion. Second.
You got a question, Nick?
Yes, I have a question. So, the whole purpose for number three, under your report, I don't know if we should wait for Lawyer Todd.
Well, there's two, two basic reasons.
I mean, number one, the main thing is, there are more people living there than there were before.
That's, that's a big part. It's just slowing the traffic down in that area with the pedestrians and the people that live in that area. And it's, it's kind of a senior community, too, as well. So-
Okay.
The citizen that came was concerned, because there are a lot of senior drivers over there, and he was concerned about, and I would help them with the traffic.
So I'm asking that question, you know, on behalf of the citizens, because I want everyone to understand that this growth is happening in every quadrant of the city. We are experiencing growth. We have more people moving here. Our rush hour used to last 10 minutes. Now it's extended out to 25 minutes. And the DOT doesn't recognize it a problem until it becomes two hours. So, I think we're, we're progressively getting larger, and there're gonna be some growing pains, and we all need to be aware and prepared for that. But thank you-
Yes, sir.
-for the four-way stop at Garfield.
All right. So we, we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It passes.
Very good. The last item we have, we discussed a little bit this morning about Lehman Street and a relationship with CSX. And first, I'd like to thank Bill Bullock. I know he's been working with CSX on this project for many, many years. He says four years, so-
He had more hair when he started.
It's been a long time. This is related to two separate requests that we have for your consideration today. The first one is a resolution to close Lehman Street at the request of CSX, to address some safety concerns that they have, and also to allow for completion of a large segment of the thread, trail. So that's the first item for your consideration. Jeff has a resolution that he prepared.
There's a resolution for you, closing a portion of Lehman Street.
Make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The second item is a motion to allow the city manager to complete the final negotiations with CSX related to a construction agreement for the thread along the right-of-way of CSX, plus two lease agreements for the thread where we would be encroaching upon the right-of-way of the railroad, and then to allow me to execute those agreements upon completion.
Motion to approve from-
License.
You gotta read that first, or no?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Did CSX demand anything else from us?
That's it, I think.
That's it.
Okay. Okay.
They didn't get the first one.
Thank you so much, Patrick, for-
Yes, sir.
-your city manager reports. No resolutions. We have now first reading ordinances. First one is to rezon four parcels that are located at the corner of Addy Street and Ware Street, from traditional neighborhood residential to traditional neighborhood mixed use.
An ordinance of mayor and council of the City of La Grange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the used sort of real estate located on Addy Street and Ware Street, and owned by Rail District Enterprises, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
All right. To rezone the 39 acres that are adjacent to Bryant Lake Boulevard and Hamilton Road from corridor medium-density residential to corridor medium-density residential.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of La Grange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify with condition the used sort of real estate located on Bryant Lake Boulevard, owned by Keystone Custom Homes, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
To amend Article 3 of Chapter 20-10, in order to create short-term parking upon a certain area of Bull Street.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of La Grange to amend the code of the city, to amend Article 3 of Chapter 20-10, in order to create short-term parking on a certain area of Bull Street, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Todd. Now, we are on the second reading of ordinances. To amend Chapter 1020 of the code in order to authorize automated traffic enforcement in school zones within the city.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table this action until we can get some clarification from the police chief at our next work session. I have been advised this afternoon, as you know, that I was pretty adamant about when this came up, that we had flashing lights to warn drivers approaching the school zone. And I've just been advised that, that Redspeed, this company does not provide those flashing lights on these devices. And until we get some clarification on this, I just think we need to rethink this.
Have a motion to table, or have a second?
I'll second that motion. I also need to ask Lawyer Todd a question in regards to the state and their legislation. Is that gonna be finished by the time we get around to this next meeting, you think?
I don't know when the session ends, but I don't know that it'll be over within two weeks. Did it make crossover at the end?
Crossover. It's passed.
Did, did this bill make crossover?
Not sure.
I don't know.
Okay.
We'll check, we'll check on that and provide that information-
Thank you. Thank you.
There's also some time for the governor to decide whether to sign something or not. So it might not be just at the end of the session. It might be that, plus some extra time.
Well, we got a motion.
Motion and a second. Sorry. Motion, uh, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. No board and agency appointments. Before our closing comments, Councilman Childs, I'd like to share something.
So, one thing I'd like to tell the council and our mayor, that I would like to make a motion that we hold off on all votes until after the election, and we have our mayor and a full council. I think that does the community justice, if we've got everybody here to vote, and our mayor and the city as well. So I'd just like to make that motion.
Got a motion to hold off on all voting until we have full council. Do I have a second?
Can I ask a question on that? We all read in public hearings, because he wasn't here. There's gonna be voting, and we have a third public conference.
I would deal with your motion. Then you have a motion?
Do I have a second on the motion?
I do a second.
No second. It dies, for lack of vote. Closing comments. Ms. Katie?
Yes, sir. The good news for tonight, we're excited to announce the naming of the proposed Ridley Lake Park to the WT Edmondson Park at Ridley Lake. We're very excited to honor the late Mayor Edmondson in this way. Also, Mayor Protenbadi and the City of La Grange are planning to host a ride for Mayor Willie T. and car show event. It's a fundraiser. It's gonna be Saturday, April 13th, 10 to 1, at Sweetland Amphitheater. All proceeds are gonna be going to the Mayor Willie T. Edmondson Memorial Scholarship Fund. And this money was something that he wanted to spend. He wanted to have this, this vision to support young people who needed help to go to college. So we're very excited and very honored to carry on his vision.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Katie. If nothing else, the meeting is adjourned.